Probably because he just doesn't feel.
Okay.
At least to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we are live streaming tonight, too.
Oh, wonderful.
Just so you know.
That's what I want to hear right from here.
I just, you know, why did you do this? I wanted to be right up here.
I appreciate the honesty. I do.
Can I pause this now?
Okay. I don't have a clicker, so I'll use this. All right, so everyone.
Can you hear her well, or should we move on to the other?
Okay. I tend to speak loud anyway, so. Um, all right, let's talk budget. Uh, I'm gonna start off with introducing our committee members. So I am Virginia Parker. I am the Bratton representative. I have been so for three years. And this year I was left in the chair. I'm gonna go ahead and ask my committee members to introduce themselves. Those that are absent, I will handle. We can go in order on the slide. Jennifer Lovecraft from Eberin. Doug Benton is absent. He represents Alexandria.
John Janis from Hampton, in the Budget Committee, I think, nine years.
Molly White from Danbury.
Eric Piper, Bridgewater.
John Sellers represents Bristol, who was unable to be here tonight.
I'm the school board representative to the Budget Committee.
Wonderful. Now that you've got some faces for those names, we'll talk a little bit about what you're gonna see on your warrant articles. Number one, very cut and dry. In order for a governing body to govern, we need to elect them. We're gonna do that on March 7th, so please make your way to your respective polling places to do so. If you're interested in running for any of those open positions, which will be at Bristol and in Hampton, on both the committee and the school board, there's a very small window. So mark those eight business days in late January, early February. That's your window. Second article that you're gonna see is about the Building Maintenance Trust Fund. This is already an established fund. We are now seeking voter approval to add an additional $400,000 to that fund. When this fund was created, this does not become an auto-roll every year. Each year, the voters have the onerous and the power to decide whether or not to fund that again. That funding is not coming from additional tax revenue. It is coming from surplus from the previous year's budget. $400,000 is the maximum. It may be a smaller amount, as deemed appropriate by the school board. That was the old one. Here's a new one. Pretty much the same deal, trade out building maintenance for technology. In this case, it's a new fund, and we are looking for the general public to approve creating it and funding it for the first year. Just like the building maintenance, if we're looking for funds in future years, that will require additional voter approval. Every year, that will come back to the voters for their approval. The meat and potatoes. Okay. And yes, that question mark is there on purpose, not a typo. So we've got two pieces to this here. The first is to ask the voters if they are willing to appropriate an operating budget set forth herein totaling $26,919,825. If that article is defeated, we will auto-go to the default budget. Anybody who's wondering the difference between those, that's the rest of the presentation. So the development process is pretty similar each year. Uh, one piece that I wanna highlight we did a little different than we have in the past three years I've been on the committee is that we broke it down into subsections. As you can imagine, $26 million budget, it's more than one page, quite a bit to it. And so when we took this on this year, we said, hey, let's break it down. For instance, I looked at the furniture quite closely. I know the Johns took a deep dive on supplies. We all took our own section, reported back to the committee, and were able to think more and more choices by looking in the bit more of a microscope, if you will. The tax cap. I would be surprised if anybody in this room did not know what the tax cap was, but it's very important that we talk about it. Our budget is subject to a 2% tax cap. That is not 2% of the entire budget. That is 2% of the tax. Yes, that's assessment. Thank you. My goodness. In that case, the maximum allowed increase for fiscal year 2024 is gonna be 314,309. That's 1.2% of the total budget. It becomes 2% of what's raised locally through the tax assessment. Numbers. I will not read all of those, but feel free to look through them. Gather questions if you have them. So what are the sources of our district's revenue? Of course, there is the local assessment. I think everyone's familiar with their tax bill, but there's other ways that our district gets revenue as well. There's the state education aid, equitable aid, special education aid, tuition, Hill, federal sources such as federal interest subsidy and ETE, school building aid. Every, every now and again, there's other things that pop into the mix, right? Estor funds, things of that nature. For the budget revenue. Everything is, of course, estimated because we're looking into the future, and much as she wishes, fortunately, Robin does not have a crystal ball. That being said, there are formulas, expectations, past years that we're able to estimate these numbers from. And as you can see, from fiscal year 2023 adopted to this year's estimated, you see a difference between 8.8 million to 9.1, roughly. Yeah, so that means that because of this increase in revenue, these are all non-tax assessment sources, in addition to the 2% on the tax assessment part of the budget, we're also able to add an additional 246,778 because it's self-funded essentially. This is not additional tax burden for you. This is self-funded additions because of that revenue that's coming in. Do you have a question?
Quick question.
Sure, thanks.
There's a big change in equitable state aid, which I get state aids going down with the adequacy aids going up. Is there some changes there?
Yes, and I know that the best person to answer that is gonna be Robin.
Just because I'm looking at it saying there's some big changes with like the special education aid, that's a huge jump?
Right.
Yeah.
They wanna come closer, Robin.
Yeah, these turnovers here are actually given to us. We know what the state aid is going to give to us. Um, we say education aid went down, but when that goes down, this goes up, so that's why the difference. So it's probably a cusp, yeah, it's a sea salt.
Okay.
Got a K in special education aid. We have a conversation with special education, and they know how many kids are here, and they expect it.
Okay, so we expect a big.
Yep.
Quite significant increase. Okay. Thank you from Gibson.
Which is great. And then, of course, you have a town-by-town breakdown of the tax assessment. So this is the portion that you're gonna see on your tax bills. This is, as we all know, currently based on average daily membership and fluctuate based on how many kids are in the school system each year. Expenditures, right? We've raised all the money. How are we spending it? Before anything happens, we have quite a few fixed costs, right? No matter what, probably we need to put the lights on in the building. There's gonna be an electricity bill. Uh, we're gonna need to heat the buildings. There's gonna be heating bills. As we all know, living in this area, there's not a significant number of companies to choose from, so we do consider those fixed costs because frankly, that's what it is. Other fixed costs, of course, include things like salaries, which has been negotiated. Last year, we approved a three-year teacher's budget. We've got transportation. We've gotta get those kids to and from home. Utilities, technology licensing fees. So technology's separate, but licensing fees rather static. Debt service, insurance, and mandatory inspections, and there are quite a few of them. Additional expenditures include special education. Within all of those together, including last slide, we're looking at total district-wide fixed cost, 21.2 million, roughly. Add in the special education of 1.7 million, which is notable. We're looking at 22.9 million before we get into pencils. That's 91.4% before we even get into pencils. So let's look at the differences between 2023 and 2024 as it's proposed. You'll see we've got 24.5 million as the adopted 23 and a proposed 25.15 with a difference here of 580, or yeah, difference here of 583,000. I'm rounding numbers because they're long. I hope that's understandable to you all. And in addition to that detailed view that I just gave you above, which leads us here, we also have food service fund, grants, and other special revenue as well. So in addition to the general fund, there's some separate items. Anybody who was here for Pierre's presentation about two months ago, probably familiar with the process, before this even hits our plates, if you will, there's a long process of deciding what makes most sense in the budget, what we can do, what needs to be cut out. And as you can see here, there's quite a bit that was cut out. And that's what we're, we have to do in order to hit that 2% tax cap that we're rolled into in this district. So, um, yep, and so you'll see two facilities, 664,000. You can see that time and time again, these items are being cut from the budget, which is part of the necessity of that separate trust fund. So a little bit more of a detailed view. Those were some big numbers. Here's some smaller ones to give you some more exact on that. Um, I know that teachers tend to be an interesting topic. And then we have technology more specifically. Um, chromatic boards, which anybody who's wondering what they are, we're using one right now. Additional markers on the technology side. Speaks to the technology aspect. That was the proposed budget. Now let's talk about the default budget, because those are two separate things. The proposed budget is something that we have crafted. The superintendent has looked at, the principals have looked at, the teachers have provided input on, and we've ultimately brought forth to you today. The default budget is a calculation. So when you're looking at the default budget, it's not something we're doing at a district level. It's done statewide, this calculation. And we're talking debt service contracts, obligations, increases mandated by law. All of these are coming together guided by the provisions RSA 4014V. So a little more specifics on this. We have what we started with in 2023, that teacher's bu, that teacher's contract that we approved for the next three years. Reduced interest payments. I always like to see a little bit coming off, right? Uh, increase in approved payments, changes in retirement benefits, approved positions in retirement stipends, the GMR guaranteed maximum rate in the healthcare program, healthcare insurance that we have for our staff, and one-time expenditures, specifically legal contracts in this case. All of that is coming down to that default budget number. So as you can see, there's no wiggle room, there's no play, there's no analysis that we do from the Budget Committee standpoint. This number is purely a calculation. So, and I think I've touched on it a bit, but just to sum up, default budget is a calculation guided by an RSA. The proposed budget is what we are recommending to you, technically not recommending, we're presenting to you today. And yes, the one very important thing to note is that the default budget does not care about our tax cap. The default budget is blind to our tax cap, which is why you can see that the default budget is actually about $3,000 higher than what we've presented to you today. Speaking of that 3,000, here it is. This is a comparison of our proposed budget to the default budget. You can see the difference happens that side of the first column. Now, this has been the first hearing, but I think we can all agree that the one with a little bit more verve to it is the deliberative session. So I wanna remind everyone to set their calendars, let their neighbors know. February 4th, right here, actually right over there, at 10:00 AM. Whatever the outcome of that meeting is and the warrant articles that exist at that, the end of that meeting, then there's gonna be a second session, which is Town Voting Day, which, as I said in the beginning, is March 7th. Please make sure you know where your polling locations are. Always important, the deliberative session is a chance as your voter to say what you want and what you think the budget should be, any amendments as required. That's your time. That's it, guys. Those are all the numbers. I think you guys are gonna continue.
Yes. But unless anybody has questions.
You want somebody to have questions?
I got plenty.
Sure.
I have so many. I put them on the spreadsheet, so look at GL number and all aspects, maybe agents, agents. Made lots of copies. Try not to beat.
Come up to the microphone.
Oh, yeah. We're not limited to five minutes, I'm assuming, on this. These are mostly questions, few comments, and then mostly questions. It's a hearing, right? So I don't think this is public conference.
You know what? Aubrey, to be honest, when you were just saying, I don't know if that's ever come up, Molly.
Well, I have a few comments that'll be under.
There's never really been an issue of somebody going on for a long period of time.
It was mostly questions.
Historically, the hearings haven't been well-attended, so new territory.
So. Yeah, Aubrey, read my book, Bridgewater. And, uh, so I have three spreadsheets here. Okay. The first one is my ranting. It should be under five minutes, but then it moves on into, uh, these one-time charges. I have some questions and issues about that one. And the third one are just simple questions. Everything is probably okay, but maybe I just don't understand what the charges are. Hopefully, somebody can explain. So, okay, the first sheet, this is my complaining one, but I've been through the full 191 pages of the GL for the proposed budget, and I just think, I know a lot was cut out, and you know, the teachers and this, and we're stuck with certain things that we can't, but I still feel there's a lot of fluff in there. And, um, you know, I mean, these are hard times, and everybody's having to cut back. The school, uh, should also cut back because honestly, people have to pay the property tax bills, and if they don't, their homes will be taken away. So I found some fluff in there. I know a lot of it is things that you can't have a broken-down school with broken chairs and furniture and broken equipment, so I'm not disputing too much about that. It's just some of the fluff you'll see on this, the necessary one. So, I mean, is there anything the taxpayers don't have to pay for these days? Okay, we got the food program. We've got, okay, the sports and the, you know, that's a holy thing. You can't touch it, or the parents will freak out. But I still think that's got nothing to do with real education, so that's why I put it in there. Some, I mean, deodorant, snacks. Is there anything we, the taxpayers don't pay for these days? Why do parents pay for stuff like that? When my son was growing, we sent snacks. We sent a bagged lunch. So, again, these are, I think it's unfair that the taxpayers have to pay stuff like this. Particularly, the field trips, I don't agree with them. Um, kids should be in school learning, not playing around. And a lot of it is entertainment and fun, to be quite honest, but even in some of the categories, uh, let's see, on the field trips here, um, they went up. Oh, and look at like number 13 and 14 on this necessary one. Um, no, sorry, 12 and 13. I think those are related to, to, that's the middle school. Okay, so you're gonna have, why increase these things? It seems to me on the middle school, I noticed from the notes, they wanna have more presence in the community. This, to me, is PR work, and I think is unacceptable. If you wanna help the community, cut back on the taxes. That will help the community. What else here? Oh, look at number five. I, I think that one is a little bit, um, iffy here. So classroom furniture upgrade to create more versatile spaces for students. Okay, we don't want them in broken-down chairs and everything else. That's reasonable. Do they have to be fancier now? Why do this now when times are hard? So I, to me, and I think that one was not as small, it was $9,000. That's wasteful. I think that's unacceptable to the taxpayers. Let's look at number 10. I really object to this one. The New Hampshire School Board Association, this is an evil organization. They are very anti-parent. They're anti-school choice, anti-EFA's, even anti-charter schools. They don't want even charter schools to be around. So, and it's not a small amount either. They, and they advise school board members to not say anything when questions are asked. I know that. This is a bad organization. We should not be paying dues to them. Okay, that's it on my ranting. Now I can move on to more. Page two, uh, one-time charges. So you know John has, uh, he's questioned this, too, and we've discussed it. And, um, I just wanna be sure that I understand the process and that the process is being done correctly. So my understanding is if it's one-time charges, it's gonna be in the budget one year. It shouldn't be in there the next year. So it should actually be deducted the next year because those, it got carried forward to the default budget. So, and my understand, and the reason I ask is items 1 through 17 are all of that nature. And these are ones that are in the current budget for 2024. Um, I'm not saying there's anything illegitimate about them or anything like that. To me, they look like one-time items. That's fine. They're gonna be in there this year. I would expect next year, when we look at the default budget from this year, that they should be deducted. Is that correct? I, I just wanna understand, uh, and it isn't just, you know, you have to actually go through the detail. Sorry, you have to go through the detail on the GL because to look at the spreadsheets, you know, in Excel, things got lumped together, so you couldn't tell. So I, I just looked at, and by the way, they did a nice job in putting the details on that, so you can kinda see what a lot of the charges are for. And to me, 1 through 17 definitely look like one-time things, uh, which is fine, but next year, they must be deducted, I think. We don't wanna have them twice again. Then, you know, if you're already in the budget this year, we don't want it to get carried forward to next year. So that's my question. So hopefully, somebody can answer that. And the, uh, I, 18 through 20, those I put lower. Uh, it's the same question on these. So maybe we could look at these here. These are more important right now because these are charges from last year that were in the budget, and I'm wondering if they were deducted in this default budget that we have here that'll be presented to the voters. I couldn't quite tell on these. To me, they look like one-time, uh, charges. And I know one of them is a, uh, it's a, you know, the 22054, that's a grant thing, but still, I, it still should be a one-time charge. So, um, I think we really have to check that before we approve the budget because, in my opinion, those should be deducted now in the budget, the default budget that's gonna be presented to the voters at the, at the session in March. So we just have to be sure on that. So that's a more important question. The top ones are like, I'd like to see them deducted next year. I can wait on those, but. And then lastly, on my question sheet, these are, not that there's anything weird, but I just, um, just my own questions and observations. Um, so I like to do those individually. On the cost for the AP, you know, they pay the charges for the kids for taking them. In my time, we paid our own AP charges. We didn't have the school pay it. But, okay, they're paying it now. So my question is, how were the results on those? Did most or all of the students do quite well? See, when you pay for it yourself, you have more skin in the game, and I think the kid will work harder because you just had to pay $97 or whatever. But if somebody pays it for you.
No.
Okay, it's good exercise, but I think you're not quite as motivated. So that, that's why my question is, how did people do, um, you know, when they took the exams later on that year? So that's my question on that. Is there an answer now, if anybody has it, or maybe?
Well, I can look up the AP. I don't have the AP results with me, but I can.
I'm just curious.
I can find those and I'll send them.
Okay, that'd be good, because I'm just curious. It's, uh, 13,000, was, was it 13,000 well-spent? You know, we're saying most of them did like a three or got a three or better on the exam. Okay. Number two, um, this to me, planning for sixth classroom, so I'm assuming that's the middle school because I see 22. Yeah, the middle school has gone up a little bit in their enrollment, but it is a declining trend. So do we need to really spend $10,300 when we know we're not gonna have, in a couple of years, you're not really gonna need those, all those extra, you know, classroom? That, to me, is a questionable, uh, spending of money because you have all those tables. What are you gonna do with them? I have less students. Okay, number three, this one is just a question. POs for Kirsarge, Lacony Adult Ed, Franklin AE. So we paying for adult education now? I don't understand that. That seems, seems.
We do send students to those schools for adult education. That's true.
Are they adults?
Not adults.
Well, no, I mean, they're high school-age students. They call it adult education.
Okay, so it's.
So it's an alternative program for our students, for our high school-age students, an alternative learning program.
Okay. For some reason, they just feel that they do better in adult education?
Yeah, this, right. They struggle in school here. Give them another chance. Giving them a try.
Uh, number four, instructional program improvement. This one, I don't know, CBA, PD is 25,000, and then there's CBA summer PD, 12,116. Um, this is something new.
Per the collective bargaining agreement, we, we're required to fund $30,000 for summer professional development for our teachers. That's, was negotiated into their collective bargaining agreement.
So we don't have any choice in that?
Right, and we do curriculum work. It's really worthwhile. Uh, the projects that they work on in the summer are really, really, really beneficial to our students on the school board.
And this is something new.
Nope, it's not new.
But I didn't see it the previous year.
Where in the, the contract was just approved last year?
Well, it's been in, but it's been in the contract for years. I'm not sure how, maybe that switched to a different line or something, but the requirement that we fund it has not changed. But that was prior to me arriving here. They're gonna ask Robin, she can look it up for you, we'll get back to you on, maybe it's been moved to a different account number or something.
Oh, okay, so it's teachers. Actually, teachers going to some.
Teachers, yeah.
Seems like they, they should already be trained to do what they're doing, but, okay, it's fine. Uh, number five, this one just is odd. Not really questioning telephone costs, but it's kinda like missing from, um, from 2023. There's like a gap in there. Seems kinda odd. I don't know, maybe got coded differently or something? Looks funny. Isn't a huge priority. It just looks odd. Okay, number six, student intervention scheduling platform, and it says enriching students. So what is that?
That's a high school program. In fact, that's in place now. And it's, it's used to schedule their students. We have this flex block of time in the middle of the day where students can go to different teachers for additional support. So it's a, you have to schedule those kids, and it's quite challenging. So this is a pro- So this is a program that they use to do that.
Really? So it's like software basically?
It's a software program, yeah.
I think that's outrageous or something. Somebody can't fix, how many students are in it?
Well, all of the students here, so it's about 380 students.
Oh, so it's a scheduling thing for, um.
For the flex period, yeah.
Okay. Okay, fine. Um, number seven, almost done. New equipment for custodian for high school. And it's quite a big increase and it didn't really have any details. What is it is my question? It might be totally legitimate, but it's.
I believe that is in their, kind of their workshop back here. It's to buy more industrial shelving. Things are just kind of on the floor and they're trying to get things organized in there. I know that's a part of it. I don't know if that's all of it. Robin can, Robin can get back to you on that with the exact.
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
I asked the same question and I went in there and looked at it and it certainly needs some work in there.
Necessary now? Why now?
Just because they're trying to get things better organized with siblings director that was working hard to try to get things under control in the district.
Last one, um, so I know this is a federal grant, so you shouldn't ask about those because they're free money, which is not free. But, um, salaries inclusion assistant. I, I D E A, must be a specific program. Obviously, it's, it's a Danbury and this is the, um, so it's the payroll. So somebody got on the payroll, so it's got the, you know, benefits and taxes and so forth. So what is the person, what did, does or did that person do? If somebody knows. Not a small amount. I know it's a grant, it's free, but it is.
I'm not sure exactly. I'll, moment, did you hear the question, Ross?
Oh, sure. So it's inclusion assistant, I D E A. Let's be, let's be like a federal program or something. Maybe a one-time stay.
I know, I don't have that in my grant.
What do we get back to you on that one?
Okay, that's it. Those were my questions.
Not for, I mean, I do have some, but not for inclusion.
Yeah, so I mean, there, there were certainly questions throughout. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure that I have a list or, I mean, I would have been happy to address them as we went. It's, it's a little hard in summation. Are there any, I guess most.
Would it be easier if somebody gets back to them with?
Yeah, we'll.
Right, I mean, I would, there's, there's quite a bit that was covered that you talked about that was covered in our meetings throughout this year. Your concerns about the formula for the default budget was covered ad nauseam in mid-December. Even some of the line items are ones that we questioned ourselves and through follow-up and due diligence deemed them appropriate. So there were quite a few line items in a, in a way that may not be expedient or even most accurate for me to provide an off-the-cup response to right now. But I think it's something that we can certainly look at in the future.
Well, how about most important at this point in the season? Is those three items, eighteen through twenty, because that's the budget that they're going to be voting on. And other stuff, hopefully I'll see it next year. But others, you just want to be sure. I, I think that they should be deducted in this budget, so.
We hear you.
Okay, so I mean, that is super important because there's, if that process wasn't done correctly.
Which is again, something that was addressed in multiple December meetings by the budget committee.
Okay, well, address it.
Again, I don't think an off-the-cup response is, is in anybody's.
No, no, right.
A factual response is the best response and it might not be the most immediate.
So Robin and I will look into those and get back to you, okay?
Well, I can answer eighteen and twenty. Both of those are, uh, grants, take grants, don't go into the default budget. They don't change, haven't changes. So two of those.
Eighteen and twenty.
Eighteen and twenty, they're both the grants.
They don't go into the default budget.
It's not something that goes into the default, like it total does, but it's not something that changes. Cause that's, has nothing to do with taxpayers running its grants. You should say it's free, but free money.
No, that, if you're saying like that twenty. Like the 28, 510 and the 27,000.
Yes.
They're not in the, um.
28, 510 and the 63,000, those, those two. Rest of it's the two-two, see if the volume and the.
Right, 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 okay.
That means different.
So you're saying they're not in the default?
They don't, they'll change the, that's the grants.
And maybe somebody will look at that other 27,000.
We'll look at nineteen. Yeah, right, it's the nineteen.
Okay.
Can I just clarify something that I think maybe? I don't, I don't know if you didn't understand it. In the presentation, there are three different funds that were summarized. Fund ten are operating budget. Then there's the food services and the grants. Food services, food services, it's an enterprise fund. So in theory, kids buy the lunches and it's supposed to be self-supporting. And then the grants budget, regardless of what the number is, if we don't get awarded the grants, we don't spend the money. So those two funds aren't really governed by the budget committee. So I think that's just important to note. So when you look at, I forget what number slide it is. She had it separated out. Slide number 14, general fund is the one that the budget committee, um, really did a deep dive on. But the food services fund and the grants and other special revenue, those numbers have no bearing on your taxation. Okay? I just wanted to point that out because it can be kind of confusing. Wonderful. Any additional comments, committee? Any additional public input? Love to hear it.
I, I have a comment.
Sure.
Um, Aubrey, you did a great job in analyzing this. But in the future, would you, would you sign it? Because if we got this or we didn't write down the review, we come across it a month from now and say, well, who brought these up? So when you do this, give credit to yourself that this is the source asking these questions. Thank, thank you.
Wonderful. Any additional input? Hearing none, we will adjourn ourselves to room 106 and allow your reading to continue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's fun having you.
Good to meet everybody.
I think you forgot your numbers is here.
So you gotta get it.
I think we forgot, I don't think we forgot anybody there last year.
No, there were two, yeah, there were two.
Were two?
Two, there were two.
Keep them included.
But I, I think there was one comment.
All right, enough of the budget hearing is done. Approval or modification of the agenda?
I do have one item to add. I'd like to recommend additional members to the building committee.
So under?
Under one.
Okay, so four under new business. Any modifications? None, we'll move on. Approval of minutes for December 12, 2022? Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion regarding December minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? 伸伸?
Aye.
Okay. Britta and Fran have stayed because they weren't here. You're welcome. Um, public comment? Okay. But did you start your timer?
Please, I'm sorry. Correspondence?
So I have two emails that I want to read in public tonight that I think is quite nice pertaining to two staff members here at the high school. One is about Jacob Tivie, our athletic director. So give me a little context here. There was an evening where our basketball teams were playing an away game and there was a, a problem with transportation in the bus and the bus company had to send another bus down there. There was some confusion and he lives local, not an evening that he normally was working because it's an away game. So he took it upon himself to come up to the school here and notify the parents as to what was going on and assist the students. So the, the email says Owen and I, says the husband and wife, having a conversation about last night. He said to me, he deserves athletic director of the year. We're discussing your actions over the last several months. I could not agree more. Last night, waiting for the kids' return and then helping them get their cars cleaned off with snow and seriously on, uh, above and beyond the effort that did not get unnoticed by athletes and their parents. Want to thank you. You exceed all expectations and the newfound community should be proud. Then we got a, another nice email was sent to Crystal Bonin, who's a high school language arts teacher here. It's a tight crystal, as a semester comes to a close. I want to be sure to thank you for your past semester with Adeline. That's the daughter. You definitely helped her gain confidence in her reading and made a breakthrough on her independent reading. She has developed a love of reading and she's never been so eager to buy books and read them. Reads one and stays up late to finish because it's so good. Makes me so happy. Continue to approach it the way, the way you have. I wish I had teachers that did that for me. And that was the mom of Krista. So very nice emails about two of our staff members here at the school.
Thank you. It's very nice. Announcements and recommendations. Superintendent report?
Uh, so I provided the board with a couple of documents that were attached to your board packet. One was the enrollment projections by Nesdeck. As you know, we asked that you fund that. So you saw that in the next three years, we can anticipate K to V decline of 22 students, grade six to eight of 25, decline of 25 students in the high school, decline of 11 for a total of 58. It says in the report that we can expect a 12.1% decrease in enrollment in the next 10 years. That'd be 138 students. And that would bring us, and that includes preschool and that would bring us down to about 1,000 students across the district. In the, um, in the, in the years, the United States Department of Education, in the years between 2020 and 2030, they anticipated a 14 and a half percent decline in enrollment in New Hampshire. And that, that exceeds all the other states, but all the other states were in single digits. And we can expect a 6.2% decline in the Northeast and a 4.3 decline nationally. New Hampshire is seeing the steepest decline of all the New England states. I also provided the board with the architect's schedule. So you got to see a sort of a spreadsheet type thing in color. It's all kind of putting that whole building committee work, um, in front of us and we can see now that we have a plan. And so I, I find that to be very satisfying to see that put into place and our budget committee has begun, I mean, our building committee has begun their work. They had the first meeting last week and file conference. That went very well. Next week, uh, actually this week on Wednesday, we'll have the first curriculum committee meeting here at six o'clock. And our elementary teachers will be starting their second round of meetings relating to CKLA. As we did, I spoke to the board about that. I sent out a document to the families of the results of that. So actually they're starting, the kindergarten teachers are starting tomorrow. And so the way it's scheduled by the end of the month, all the teachers, um, grade level teachers will have met for a second time to work on the CKLA curriculum. And that's what happened.
Mika's student rep report?
After a much needed winter break, students are hopping straight to business. Project Promise is sponsoring another year of SAT prep classes for juniors, which actually started today right after school. Every student was given a free SAT book and it is almost 1,000 pages long and incredibly intimidating. The actual, actual SAT test is scheduled for March 22nd. Freshmen and sophomores are going to be taking the PSAT, which is the practice test for the SAT. Freshmen also have another standardized test scheduled and that will be the NWA. And on the 24th, this quarter and semester will be closing and quarter three will start on the 26th. In athletic news, the girls ski team came in second place at our first meet last Friday at Gustav and the boys placed at 24, or placed in third. This is super exciting and really promising after having a very long fall of skiing, just not having anything. Girls basketball is struggling with numbers and unfortunately a lot of players have injury, but they're putting in a lot of effort and have improved greatly since the beginning of the season. Cheer is hosting a large group of girls who have been on the sidelines, supporting our teams in the gym. And right now they are fundraising for matching birds to show up at the first complex unified attendance tournament and they won two games and tied another. Math team has been absolutely slaying this season. Everybody is so proud, especially considering the very obvious math deficiency we have. But the department has seriously gotten us excited about going to meets and competing and it's provided motivation for a lot of people to continue working hard and trying to excel in math. We've come in first place twice and second place once and our next meet will be this Friday. Robotics was invited to InterLakes to attend the kickoff of the season where the challenge for the ears announced and three students attended that. Mrs. Doolan took her criminal justice reform class to the state women's prison in Concord just before break where they learned about the incarceration part of the criminal justice system. On the 28th of this month, Monax will be happening and Yashashawk in support is going to be so good and everyone is so excited. And on the last day before break, almost 30 alumni came and visited this new body to talk about college and just life after high school. It was really interesting watching teachers interact with them and getting to observe their relationships and especially listening to them talk about how each of our teachers had affected their life long after high school. And we're told that we're going to get to do that again, which a lot of people are looking forward to because that, that was really interesting.
Thank you very much. Teacher rep report?
So today's report is from Bridgewater Hebron Village School. The past few months have been very exciting at BHBS. The fourth graders embarked on a field trip to the state house where they were able to meet Governor Sununu, the Speaker of the House, and the Supreme Court Justice. Families were welcomed for a Thanksgiving feast, excuse me, Thanksgiving feast prepared by Chef Kevin, complete with many delicious treats. Kindergarten has been learning through play utilizing a grant awarded through UNH where a coach visits their classroom every two weeks. The children at BHBS joyfully celebrated the holidays at the beginning of December with a Christmas concert. They sang, danced, and played instruments for all of their families. Fifth graders offered wellness public service announcements that sparked the holiday spirit. It was a wonderful evening for the many parents and families that attended. Our PTCO once again hosted our holiday boutique, a favorite among our students, as well as ornament decorating for the Hebron Tree Lighting, a wonderful community event. The children enjoyed our annual day before break celebration thanks to our generous volunteers on our. on our P T C O. Once again, Chef Kevin surprised us all with a beautiful Santa's workshop that was 100% edible. With 2023 upon us, the children anxiously anticipate all of the new learning to come and all of the wonderful things this new year will bring.
Thank you very much. Committee reports, budget committee, we just had a hearing.
We just had a hearing. I don't know if you know, but that's, that's where we're at. So they're meeting right now, just so everyone knows the process, and they're going to discuss the input that was received and just make a recommendation on the budget that will be presented at the deliberative session in February. So that's what's going on today.
Facilities committee?
We had a meeting last Wednesday and our main, the main discussion was the building committee schedule coming up, what's going to happen when. So whatever you, I haven't opened up the email yet, but I'm assuming it's the same one.
Same thing.
Yeah, so that's what we went over and nothing else was discussed.
Policy committee, we have any?
Thursday.
Thursday.
And the index looks complete.
Okay.
Which is what School Boys Association.
Wellness committee?
We met in December. We have another meeting. You were on storm work. You were on storm work. We meet again next, 18. Thank you, Ms. Ross.
New business, 2023, 2024 school calendar?
So much anticipated calendar for next year. As you already know, I believe recommending that we open the first day of school after Labor Day. This, as I think you know, is a response to a new state law that tells us that we have to work cooperatively with our C T E region. It's called Region Eight, the Hewitt C T E Center in Laconia. There are eight sending school districts there. And as Mr. Harice and I found when we went to that scheduling meeting, the calendar meeting, we're the only district that starts before Labor Day. And so that is a very clear indicator that we need to get in alignment with them. So the whole idea of the RSA is to realize the number of days that students miss C T E because of calendar issues. We cannot make it perfect and it's not perfectly aligned 100%. So as an example, like in the Laconia schools where Hewitt, Hewitt Center is, they use their buildings on voting days. So during the primary voting in September and again during the general election, their school buildings are closed so they don't have C T E. But those aren't days that we close. So we don't, it's just not possible for us to align those. But the rest of the holidays are, the vacations are all aligned. We did move five of our early release days, typically our early release days are on Wednesdays, but you'll see there's five of them that were moved to Tuesday. That's in alignment with the rest of the schools. But we did not move, there's two days on the March when we have a professional development day, say like on March 15th, that we really like the way we do things here where we have an early release day on Thursday and then we have a third day, professional development on Friday. Gives us a chance to really do more work in depth. So we, we did not change on that as much in October there. But the rest of it, you can see the holidays and the vacations are all aligned to the state calendar as well. So given that, if the board would like to approve that, of course it may not be.
Don't we have to have a, isn't our C B A that we have an early release every month?
We do.
Not in November.
But not in November and that was agreed upon by the teachers. We actually didn't have one this year either. It's just a meeting with Deidre Conway, their union president. It's a very busy month. And so if, and so if you recall in the past, they had an early release day, the week of Thanksgiving break.
Now it's a full day. Now it's a full day about Wednesday.
No, but even, there was even an early release day.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So it just was with parent teacher conferences, with Veterans Day, and with Thanksgiving. It's just, you know, the teachers really want to try to get five days in a row where they can teach. And so it doesn't really happen in November only once, only one week. So we kind of came to that agreement with the teachers that.
Is that the public comment timer?
Oh, it's the public comment.
Is that your timer?
Your timer.
No.
I didn't.
So yeah.
Mary bells.
We didn't have, we didn't have an early release day this year either.
I have a question about the alignment. So you said there are two days that they're not going to school that we are and there's two days that we aren't having school but they are. How do snow days play into that five total count that we can't align? Like what happens if we have a snow day because, you know, we just do and say Laconia doesn't? How does that work for those towns?
Well, it just kind of is a wash. I mean, it doesn't, there isn't anything we can do about that.
So it doesn't count towards that five?
No, and they recognize that. I think that the RSA language is like, you know, make the best attempt you can.
Okay.
Have a line in your calendar. So they, they, I'm sure they must consider that.
Just because it's.
We're going to have some schools.
I mean, Guilford and Groton are two very different towns.
Right, yeah.
Weather wise.
That never came into the conversation. We didn't discuss that. I think Hewitt, the Hewitt Center and their C T director is very pleased with the work that you've done so far to get everybody.
No further questions. I need a motion to accept the 2023, 2024 calendar.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Extentions?
Leave request. We have a leave request from Thomas Rollins, high school math teacher. He is requesting unpaid leave for the remainder of the student.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, second, and I'm sorry.
I did.
Heidi, thank you, Heidi.
You're welcome.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Warrant articles?
Warrant articles. So the board should have, you know, warrant articles tonight as you saw them presented by Virginia Packer. So they're all, I mean, they're all standard articles. The only thing that's new is, as I mentioned, my presentation in November was the addition of the technology expendable trust. And that is really a response to the fact that we've been able to do a lot of great work with our ESER fund and getting to a one-to-one computing for our students or as close as we can. And that ESER funded next year is the last year for that. And with the tax cap, that'll present a real challenge maintaining one-on-one. So if we can move money from surplus each year into technology and, and you know, the same way we've been doing it with our maintenance expendable trust fund, we're hopeful that we continue to fund technology the way we need to. And then you see we have the operating budget warrant articles as well. So they're all very standard articles, just the technology one is the new.
Has the petition warrant article window closed yet?
Tomorrow at 3:00, 3:30 tomorrow.
Will we have to re-vote if something comes in tomorrow by 3:30?
We, you don't have a choice.
Okay.
You don't vote, you don't, you don't vote out.
No.
I'll notify you if something comes in.
Yes, I'm very excited.
Nothing has come in yet.
I don't know.
I'm not putting one in. Don't look at me. He looked at me.
Well, last year we had one, we had one last year.
3:29.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Literally the last minute.
It was, we have the 11th hour. So maybe something will come in. I will let you know either way if you're dying to know.
Curiosity killed the cat there.
All right. So warrant articles. Article two, expendable trust fund, building maintenance to see if the New Found Area School District will vote to raise and appropriate up to the sum of $400,000 to be added to the expendable trust fund, building maintenance, and to authorize the use and transfer in that amount from the undesignated fund balance available July 1st if you can agree for this purpose. I need a motion to accept. Warrant article. A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? So this is not by taxation, this is just us moving by, right?
Undesignated fund balance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. I was like to double check.
Actually, that sounds good on that.
Okay.
They're almost a smooth ground.
They're almost there. I don't think it's a smooth ground. All right, the noise is gone. So friend, move, did I, did we have a second?
Yes.
Sorry. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Article three, expendable trust fund technology. To see if the New Found Area School District will vote to establish a technology expendable trust fund per RSA 198,20 dash C, the, for the purchase of technology-related resources and to raise and appropriate up to the sum of $100,000 to be placed in the expendable trust fund technology and to further name the school board as agents to expend from the fund and to authorize the use and transfer, use slash transfer in that amount from the undesignated fund balance available July 1st, 2023 for this purpose. I need a motion.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Okay. We do, yeah, we can because we didn't, unless they make any changes, right?
So we can't do that unless, because if they make changes, if budget committee makes changes now, because we have to wait until they're done.
Right.
We can't vote.
We can't vote on that.
So why don't we hold until the 24, whenever it's.
23. Because we can't.
Okay.
In case they vote and make any changes in their proposal to us.
Do it on the 23rd.
Right.
I'll wait until you write it down. If I don't write it down, I'll forget.
All right.
Four, building committee.
Okay. So since the school board has, you made, you approved your, our building committee, we had one committee member deciding he wasn't able to serve from the hand of Christopher Van Leighton. So I think most of you saw me with the communication to our families, really targeting Bridgewater, Groton, and Alexandria because neither of those towns had representatives on the committee. I thought it was important to do that. So I do have two people that expressed an interest from that and I'm going to ask, ask the board to approve adding them to the building committee. Erin Quimby from Alexandria has children at the Bridgewater Hebron School and Chris Bean, who lives in Bridgewater and has children at Bridgewater School and he's a police officer and an alum of New Found. So we would have every town except for one, Groton would be the only one not represented if the board would like us to serve.
I'll move to accept the nominations for the building committee.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Okay. Next, board comments?
I have one. I just wanted to say happy birthday to our wonderful clerk.
To who?
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Since we talked about the Hewitt school schedule, with another hat on, I had occasion to work with the Hewitt school program, high school program, with the plumbing and heating trade. I wrote this on board at the Bell County Board Exchange and we got it. The president said this year, the board structure is a tap, hell on. And we had all the labor except for electric home and the woman installation that either by Indy or by Hewitt Center. So every day the school bus would pull up and the kids would all climb up and they would go to work and they did all the plumbing. They added two bathrooms and renovated two bathrooms, renovated the kitchen and put in heating systems. They did a fantastic job. It was great helping the students out and of course they didn't work for free and you know, we're a nonprofit, so it was very complimentary and so it was very efficient and the kids got, you know, we talked about how they would be eligible for a credit for their first year. They graduated and start out with, you know, fairly good sales. So it was, holiday spirit.
That's a great story.
That's wonderful.
I know that when Mr. Harice and I were down there at one of their meetings, there was, they were showing us floor plans of the next house they were going to build and they have community partners that helped with the funding for all that. And you're right, it's just tremendous, these are great learning experiences for our students to really apply what, also not only what the learning in the classroom at C T E, but what the learning here as well. So those, that's great to hear.
Thank you for sharing.
Yes, thank you.
That's nice to hear.
I have a comment.
Yes.
From when I was at the facilities committee the other night, we, we received the schedule of events. I noticed that the next three months, January, February, March, you're going to be doing site selection, this solicitation, the assessments and the selection. And I do have a concern with one of your members because he is a real estate agent. I'm hoping that it's not a conflict of interest for him being on this committee when it comes to site selection, solicitation. My fear is that if something is chosen that he might represent or be on the, or a member of the real estate committee, whatever, I just truly hope there's no conflict of interest with that. I would hate to see any monetary gain from him being on this committee.
That's a good point.
Okay.
That should be.
Absolutely. You need, that definitely needs to be addressed.
Okay.
Going for, even going forward, if he's still on the committee and you decide on something, he should definitely recuse himself from it.
Okay.
Yep.
Any further board members comments? Okay, next, approval manifest. The other December ones are clear. Okay. I move to approve the December manifest. Second. Any further discussion?
Can I get that one where I said I completely spaced on the assignment? The current, most current one, please. There's just one I missed.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Sorry, anybody against extensions? Sorry. Cut off my routine, sorry. Article five, committee report?
Oh.
Did you guys see?
Oh, I did not.
It wasn't in our thing either.
We're going to have to put that off to the next meeting. Robbie was in the office today, she was attending. So we'll do that around this.
Did you get feedback from?
No.
From anybody?
No.
No?
Nope.
Okay.
So with that. So there is no article, like, plan? I've been now asked twice what I thought about the new plan.
There is no plan.
The name draw and, and I said, I have, I don't know what you're speaking of.
No.
And, yeah, twice I've asked. So what do you think of the new plan?
There is no.
I go through all my notes, like, did I miss something?
We have consented with a new plan. They didn't come to a conclusion.
Nothing.
I just wanted to bear, like, because like twice I've been asked about the new plan and felt kind of blindsided.
Nothing was decided on.
Okay.
You could tell whoever's asking you that, the committee was not able to decide on it. So there are no changes. They made no recommendations.
Okay.
But if there was going to be a recommended change, they would recommend it to this.
Okay.
Yep. We would have had. We would have had to approve it, yeah.
Nothing there. So we're still at, we're at a hundred percent.
So we take that as status quo then?
That is status quo.
Yep.
All right, did you have the enrollment projection and our architectural study schedule that you sent to us? Has it been thirty minutes?
It has been thirty minutes and ten seconds. Well, this is the time here.
Okay. In ten seconds, okay. I need a motion to adjourn. So moved? A second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, abstentions? A jury?